Steve, run the numbers.
This is the agenda of a special meeting of the Finance Committee of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois, for June 2024.
Did you say really the third? Yeah. I was thinking it was the fourth. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call. This is the roll call.
Trustee Cap?
I'm here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Yeah.
Mayor Paul?
Acknowledgement of the mailing of the notice of the special meeting of the Finance Committee of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois with the agenda to Chairman John J. Cap, Jr., and each member of the Finance Committee, and of the posting of the notice of the special meeting of the Finance Committee with the agenda on the village bulletin board and website. So, clerk, that's all that has been done yet.
Yeah.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on opening of the meeting for any person to address the Finance Committee. I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting to the public for any person to address the Finance Committee.
Second.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Yeah.
Mayor Paul?
All right, now it's your turn. You guys got anything?
Yeah, John, how do you care? Excuse me. John, we got a, you don't live too far from me, you got the flyer that was sent out. You weren't here the last meeting, I was here. The before and after picture of that house, I couldn't tell whether it was before or after, but I was just wondering, how much money did we make on the house?
Which house? I'm sorry.
It was on the lower left corner of the flyer that he gave us. He never answered how much money he had, so I'm assuming we lost money on it. Do you guys even keep track of that?
What house would that mayor?
That house didn't have anything to do with what we talked about here now.
It's finances. I'm asking, how much money did we make? So now you're gonna decide what we can and can't talk about? That's financial.
Development agreement. And the developer took care of the cost that was associated with that.
I'm just asking, did we make any money on it?
Well, we didn't lose any money, I'll put it that way.
Could you talk to us in layman's terms? Not political. Did we lose money on it?
No, we did not.
You said no.
No.
Okay. Concerning the audit now, for past several meetings, I've asked about the audit, and Cap, you're the Finance Chair. Richardson and Greer, I understand, are on, because they're here tonight. I don't know if you guys know or care, because you guys never really say anything at the meetings about our finances, but Cap, you have to know about it. Maria Pappas came out on Friday and sent an email to all of us saying, here's your tax bill, and it tells you about government debt and pensions. And John, you told me about two years ago through a text, that all of our debt is in the police pension fund. We don't owe any money to anybody else. I'm wondering, the audits haven't been available since '21. I hear the auditor is waiting for the police pension disclosure. Mr. Polk's been telling us that he doesn't know where it is. It's like you just nonchalantly say you don't care about it, and you're just hoping to go through the next election, basically let it fly through, and I mean, why can't you, why are you holding back on the audit? They're waiting for the disclosure for the police pension fund.
I mean, you're the one that's bringing up politics when I specifically...
This is about money!
When I raise your voice, keep your voice down, people are staying in the meeting. But what I said was that concerning that, I said the report had not been done yet. And as soon as we get that information, you will have it. It is not done.
The auditor said you're holding up, giving them information. That's why I'm asking you today.
That's not true.
So you're saying the auditor is lying? They said the field work is done, they're waiting on the disclosure of the police pension fund.
I don't know if the auditor would reveal that information, but the report is not complete. It is not complete, and like I said before...
You don't know nothing about why it's not complete?
I mean, when it is done, you'll have it.
So you're saying the auditor is lying? She seems straightforward to me.
You said that.
No, 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 you said, Polk, you're...
The report is not complete, okay?
We have a snake running Burnham that won't give us any kind of information. You're a little, little man, and the Lord is watching you.
But that is your narrow...
The Lord is watching you.
And that is your narrow opinion, and nobody's complaining.
Is that the best you got?
One minute.
Are you timing me there, Chavez?
Yes, I am.
Okay. 14108, I foiled you, I'm glad you reminded me of that. I foiled 14108, I wanted any documents related to that property. From the outside, you can see a central area unit has been put in there, a big tree has been cut down, like two or three foot diameter. No, they got a new furnace in there. You gave me two different documents. I'm wondering, you have to know about it, Chavez. I'm wondering, that's gotta be illegal, or fraudulent, or whatever, just trying to keep information from us. Polk, you've given me a few things over the phone a couple times. I never foiled it. I did foil it, you gave me the roof and the electrical. Where's the rest of the documents?
And there's one other provision, but that has to be checked out. And once that is complete, then I will make sure, permit that you get there, but I have to verify that for it. Okay?
Why, what do you mean? No, what do you mean? Did you find, you told me two years ago you lost a document, or she did. She's our librarian. Was that document ever found?
What I'm saying, there's another provision...
What's the provision? Could you talk non-political to me?
And once that is checked out...
So you can't?
...confirmed, then you're getting information.
So you're not gonna tell us? You gave me two documents of about ten different things that have happened to that house. Let me ask you this, when's the next time you plan on giving some attention to that house? What's the next move on it?
And we'll get back with you.
That's what I thought. I'll be asking this two, three years from now. That's all I wanted.
Anybody else have anything? Jared, you got anything?
I mean, probably not, but since John brought up a couple issues on it. I think it might serve you better sometimes when people would request freedom of information and stuff, especially when it comes to... You want me to say something? I see you're running the meeting.
Are you speaking for comment now?
Yes, I am.
We need your name, please.
My name is Mr. Hunter. Now that my train of thought has changed. I think you'd be better off, just when it comes to like Burnham purchasing houses and bringing companies in and doing work and saying that it's gonna be a greenhouse, and, you know, we're gonna bring children in and come look at the house because it's some special greenhouse. And when you do things like that, I think that when people start to question, well, wait a minute, man, why is that? That, you know, maybe it's the economy that is just sitting there, but, you know, people start to get concerned, and sometimes that's where fraud can happen, giving those jobs to people and the wheeling and dealing. And I think you'd be better off when people ask for things, you know, you don't have to not give it to them. You really don't have to do freedom of information. I mean, you don't have to force somebody into a freedom of information to give them information. That's not a requirement, that's just a tool. And you might be able to dispel some of these things and these questions, if you were just honest and gave somebody an explanation of why that house is there, how you got it, what you plan on doing with it, and the money that's invested, and what you plan on doing when it's done. I think you'd never have the question come up again, but for some reason, you know, you keep it quiet and you keep it secretive, and people start to ask questions. And be a little more transparent, I think you'd get a little less pushback.
Well, again, I'm gonna say this for the last time, so that's a moment, you that has to be done, that. And once that is done, the information will be forthcoming, and it's further. One other thing I'd like to say about the house, and Jared, you know...
Which house? Which house? I brought up a couple of them.
We're talking about the same house.
Oh, you said 14108 or something?
Right, that's one we...
Yeah, but I talked about the before and after, what is, 14108?
That's the Peewar's house.
Correct.
But I think there's two Peewar houses that the villages actually had some dealings with.
Hey, but the other one was taken care of.
Right, there's two of them, so it makes you start to wonder, well, wait a minute, then, why are they both Peewar houses?
The other one was in New Bern, right?
Yeah. Makes you wonder, though.
Go ahead, Mr. Polk.
I know you're an honest man, and there's no way that you could be corrupted, but I'm just saying, maybe we should know.
But the two Peewar houses are not the only two houses that was part of the report that you're not looking at. That you're not looking at, that would apply to...
Well, you're not telling us, so we're not looking at it, so...
Had you mentioned that, I'm gonna shut up, too?
Let me say this before we go on, so...
I don't care, I'm just, whatever.
I mean, as I said, the, that house, well, one thing, as long as the house was falling apart and rotting down, the guy said nothing about it.
You're lucky it hasn't been broken into in the last three years.
I just said nothing about it.
Real lucky.
When the house about to fall apart, you never open your mouth. Then as soon as the village started making some progress on it, then you started complaining.
A few of the neighbors next door said it should have been torn down without doing anything to it. They live next door to it, I don't.
Well, neighbors never talk to us about it.
What's the inside look like? Does it have rooms, or is it all gutted?
Heck, no. It's all studs.
Pretty much.
It's got electrical in there, gotta redo the water lines. That's why I was wondering what you, it's across the street from me. If it was across the street from you, you'd care to. That's my only point.
I couldn't... My granddaddy was across the street from me. Okay, continue.
What?
All right, we're gonna move on. Discussion of consideration of taking action on closing of the meeting to any person to address the Finance Committee. I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting to the public.
The motion informed to close the Finance Committee.
Second. Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the appropriation of sums of money being necessary to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the Village of Burnham for fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2024, and ending April 30th, 2025, and specification of the objects and purposes for which the appropriations are made, and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose. So let's...
Do we all have clues in front of us?
Okay, we are good. You wanna start?
Yeah, sir.
Where do you jump down to which line I...
I just wanna say one thing real quick. Good morning, Steve Powers, Assistant of the Chief of Police. It's an honor to work for the Chief, the Mayor, the Board, and Louis. Thank you for what you do for us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We do have a bit, even though some people don't think so.
So which line item are you starting at?
We could start with... 18 maintenance.
What's the number?
That is, I'm sorry, number 23.
I didn't get a ruler, but that's okay. I need a...
23 is IT maintenance, so that helps with the body, the body handling that are required.
23 is IT maintenance, so that's, that helps with the body, the body handling that are required.
Yeah, how much did you project those go?
Around $50,000, so that's gonna be in the lower dollars.
Yeah, so that's a separate line item?
So IT maintenance is maintaining the cameras and all the other IT that goes along with...
We got a new server, so we had to split that between each department.
So you went over budget?
Would you project that?
Uh, that would be number 45.
So you want the 30,000 in this line?
Body server and maintenance of the... Computers.
All right. The next item is?
Stay the same. That's our computers and vehicles.
Okay.
Police services, contraption number 25, that stayed the same.
All right. Police supplies, stay the same. Office supplies?
Office supplies, stay the same. Postage, went up by 100, but we did change with our new ordinance, so we're able to just one time send out a notice, and add to that, so we shouldn't have to keep sending notices anymore with the new ordinance, or we'll still have some postage. Publication, stay the same. Number 30, vehicle purchase. $90,000 to $120,000.
And we are gonna look at electric as an option?
Yeah, sure, so you can have a meeting with them, and then we could overlook that to see if it's a good fit for us. If not now, maybe in the future.
Yeah, okay.
And treated for it. There was no vehicle purchase last.
We didn't spend any.
Office equipment, stay the same. Office equipment maintenance, stays the same.
I never saw any solar panels, so I didn't think it would be...
Vehicle repair and maintenance, achieved with updating our fleet. It's costing less to maintain vehicles, so we actually lowered that.
You lowered it to what?
30,000, from 35,000 to 30,000.
Oh, okay.
Never lower it, never lower it. Always raise it.
Radio maintenance, stay the same. Equipment maintenance, it's gonna stay the same. Phone service, that would be through the village, correct? Is it through, kinda split off?
Split up.
Stay the same?
Yeah.
Our phone services is internet based.
Cable and internet, stay the same. Securities and alarm stays the same. Dues and membership, more personnel, we're asking for from 1,500 to $2,000, is waiting more personnel now than last year. Gasoline and oil, 40,000 to 35,000. We went a little longer on that, that's true. Personnel training...
Maybe we spent less?
Yeah, we did. Personnel training, staying the same. Health exams, requesting to stay the same. Number 43, meals for prisoners, staying the same. Impound expense, not liable, staying the same, that would be if someone got a impound in a county hearing, and then the judge called them not guilty, they would get their money back. IT purchases, number 45, trustee, this is where the body hearing can go, it's on the debt increase, and that is required by state law. So we're asking from 37,500 to 250,000 to cover that.
And that's for the purchase and the equipment to change, yes?
Yeah, and then, and that's why it went up, and the maintenance as well.
Okay. Do we, chief, is there a policy in place to make sure the officers turn them on?
Yeah, we're working on the policies now, we've already talked to...
The union?
The camera company. The unions are aware that this is going in effect, we will have a conversation with them. And hopefully by October or November, we should have those cameras. The company actually sent us a demo camera that we received today, so this is all gonna be new, so for the next couple days and in the next week, we'll get familiar with that, and then look into the software and everything else, so. It's all very new, we start really working on it real hard last week, we got the demo today, and for the next week or two, we'll learn that and talk to legal to see what would need be legally, to make sure that everything's fine, so.
I was just thinking about what happened in Louisville a couple weeks ago, where the officer didn't turn his camera on. But it's nice to have them, but you have to make sure to turn them on. All right.
And then, equipment purchases. So that was, so that's our plot, safety cameras, you know, that have been put up to fulfill, so if they cover that, question from 2,000 to 10,000. Couple of cameras. The major crimes task force, staying the same. Regulatory compliance, that would be anything that goes through, they just, that would stay the same. Building repairs and maintenance, trustee, he went from 7,500 to requesting 25,000, and that's for a new fence in the back, and the complete pavement repair, all the way around and to extend it, and then to put the lines, so everything looks cleaned up by the park as well. So extended all the way to that stop sign.
So you're gonna pave the whole lot all the way around?
Yeah.
All right. Not necessarily all the way around, just extend on the, maybe just the...
Yeah, it'll be a patch and repair, a patch and repair along this side, the other side, possibly do an extension for four additional vehicles. I believe that tree was down, a lot of debris was falling from that tree in the past, so thank you for addressing that. And hopefully, between us and the park district, we can do what we discussed about the extra parking spots, and kind of go from there.
Probably seal it, right? We don't have to do that, they don't pave it all.
Seal it. Patch and seal it? All right.
The traffic calming expenses, that's the speed damage, I'm sorry, the speed signs, so that's why from 0 to 2,000, about the speed.
Did we ever get an answer from them on, or access? Did you ever get back when you opened that ticket?
That would be the...
At least you never heard back when you opened the ticket and get that on, and the camera?
Yeah, that means...
Yeah.
Would we be able to handle it? Probably like, you know, they probably not open up without a filter.
That flashes when you go...
You got that one in dog, and you go for flat, then...
Oh, they don't like that?
Yeah.
That could be something we could...
When you go to jail, we could look at it.
And then contingencies, requesting...
What was your numbers, Lars? How much are you increasing your budget? Did you do that? What percentage do you...
Well, we can't...
Added one, I didn't want to put all added in, it'll be part of the added.
We're gonna go hit to the police commission.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So you haven't heard back from that GM guy yet?
He said he was out until today.
Oh, on vacation.
Oh, that's pretty...
For them guy.
All right, so the next item will be the Board of the Police and Fire Commissioners. Want me to do each one one at a time? So line item number one is administrative expense, we budgeted 100, we're gonna leave it at 100?
I have a question. You know, police and fire commission, they, they serve, you know, it's not paid at all. I was considering maybe we should put something in, maybe, maybe give them something at Christmas time, or gift or cycle or something.
Spend more money. We don't even know where we stand.
Well, let's take a nap, we'll get back.
What would expense for catchment, if that's all in up under administrative or up under office supply? Because I know that, you know, he pays for a lot of that catchment.
That's totally a different committee, it's not police and pension, and the police and pension fund, with the approval of the board, compensates him for ink and paper, and I believe it's under $100 a year that the pension fund reimbursed him for that stuff, yes?
Okay, the second item then, legal services, special counsel, we budgeted 1,500, we're gonna leave it at 1,500? Third item, professional consultants, we budgeted 2,500. We almost spent that, but we're gonna have them stay at 2,500? Yeah. Court reporter fees, we budgeted 1,000. Didn't use any, so we're gonna leave it at 1,000? Examination fees, 1,500, we spent a little bit more than that. So where do we wanna go?
So what ends up happening, we have to establish a list, and that list is good for every couple of years, so for one year, we'll spend more money, two years, we will not, the third year, we'll spend more money until we exhaust the list. That's why you're gonna see the numbers that are gonna fluctuate every, every two or three years.
And one person on the list, right?
Yes, sir.
We're not gonna have more exams, probably.
I'm sorry?
Probably gonna have more exams coming.
Once we exhaust that list, that individual has not been hired or approved by the board yet, and until we have that approval, and that individual's in the academy, we will not start working on that list until this list expires, or we exhaust that list.
So you need more money for exams for this upcoming year, then?
Uh, no, it'll be the next year. It'll be the next fiscal year of 2025.
So we'll leave it at 1,500?
Uh, yes.
Okay, number seven is office supplies, 150, we didn't spend any, just leave it at 150? Publication expenses was 250, and we didn't use any of it? That's when we sent out the list, right? We have to notify people that...
Correct. The police side, I believe, we took out of our budget for the advertisement of all applicants, full or...
All right, so we'll leave that at 250. Dues and memberships, 250, we'll leave that at 250? Contingencies are 1,000, we'll leave it at 1,000?
Well, we have to, we have to begin tightly to make it fly off the scale.
Yeah, just keep this one in mind, and you can, there's a couple there you could borrow from, or lower if you need to. Are you staying to this? Okay. So we're gonna move on to the general corporate fund for the community center? We'll start with number one, but we could skip one because it's a salary. Number two is a pension, we'll skip that. IT maintenance was 2,000, we spent 4,400. So where do you wanna go to? Are you done with that now?
I think we're done with that.
We're not one speed, I don't think you expect it. So you have 2,000, you should be able to fix it with 2,000, right? We have 2,000.
Or number three?
All right. Office supplies, 400, we spent 450, we're at 400? Natural gas, 2,000, we spent 1,600, leave it at 2,000? I wonder if the new furnaces are more efficient? They might be, right, than the old one? They should be, right? And you buy now, it's more efficient than when you take out. Electric expenses, I guess we don't have any to come off, so you give us the electric for the community center? Office equipment purchases, 500, we spent 45,090, that was all the new computers? Yeah. So what do you wanna do with that? Go back to 500? Go back to five hundred?
We probably may do five.
Turn that down. I'm a little slow here. Okay. Which one did you wanna go to? Oh, that was number seven? Yeah, it went to two thousand.
No, we went.
One thousand? Equipment maintenance, probably can go down on that. All right, go to two thousand. Phone service, we almost spent the five hundred, we're just leaving it five hundred? That's on the internet as well, right? Town cams? They called me the other day, by the way. Cable and internet service, uh, we budgeted forty-two hundred, it was forty-one sixty-eight, we spent, you wanna leave it at forty-two? Security and alarm, we budgeted a thousand, spent two hundred and fifty-eight. Where do you wanna go with that?
Well, we may have to bump it up there, but I don't think that's working.
It's not connecting.
Right.
I set it off every time I go there, right? I'm slow, I'm slow.
We're too slow. An alarming.
It's not connected to the new phone line, right?
Right.
It's connected to the old phone. IT purchases, three thousand, we spent five hundred and fifty-nine. Go to a thousand on that one? Equipment purchase, three thousand. Oh, now we spent forty-two thousand? Did we buy all the computers? Was that our air conditioners? Sounds like your price is right. Oh, that was, yeah, that, you're right, that was the air conditioners. And we had to buy those?
You have about twenty each, right?
Yeah, they were. I'm not sure that other one's working, right, you know, I call.
I called that on a couple of months.
It had to be loose.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we could go back to three thousand? Building repairs and maintenance. Building, uh, repairs and maintenance, fifty thousand, we, uh, spent thirty-four hundred?
I'm sorry, number thirteen?
Did I have some concerns?
Which item?
Number thirteen.
We stayed the same on fifteen?
No, we went to three, yeah, we did.
We stayed at three thousand, right? Yeah. So what's number fourteen?
The concern is the outside that sign at the top, the panel that's coming out on the outside, it doesn't look good.
The soffit came down recently, right? Is that what you're talking about? I noticed that yesterday, too. Okay, so go to ten thousand on light at fourteen? Didn't the county promise to help with some of that?
Yeah, yeah, probably, we're waiting, waiting.
Community events, three thousand, we spent fourteen hundred, where do we wanna go? Leave it three thousand? Contingencies, five hundred, didn't spend any, leave it five hundred? Communities any missing latest, we have a zero, we just kept the item open?
Yeah.
Leave it at zero? All right, done. That's all I wanna do today?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Also on the floor, about John, can we get a second?
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 Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
I will get back when she's done.
And, uh, we've spoken about that order we were in that law. It's that, I think it, that guy we talked about from Hundred and Fifty, Angel, that little pickup truck, he was trying by.
Do you know him, John? He drives a little pickup truck that's real loud.
Gotta be more specific.
I think we, he lives on one hundred and thirty-eight, you know who that is? No?
No, I just walked down there, I don't really talk to the whole body.
Nick said he lives on one hundred and thirty-eight, I don't know where he lives.
That fire hydrant, now that you bring it up, that fire hydrant, you're not gonna replace it down there?
Which one?
The one they got run over.
We got a quote for that, I think he made, twelve grand, some twelve hundred.
No, one of the neighbors over there said you guys are gonna, he talked to, I think, Stephanie, I didn't.
What are we doing with that fire hydrant? We got a quote.
No, good to hear.
The mayor gave me that info as far as what the price was. He, right, he lumped a couple of things together.
I heard it was gonna be centrally located from the neighbor, I said, what the heck does that mean? You get a fire over there, here goes another lawsuit. Good to hear it's gonna be replaced, though.
The guy who hit it should pay, right? His insurance should pay to replace him?
That car's impounded, that guy has no money. What's that?
We had a discussion with the fire department, we're ahead of you on that, we got it.